Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Present this evening, we have Daniel Edmiston, member, Thomas Chinaki, member, Steve White-Trowberg, clerk of the board, Mr. Richard Clark, vice chairman, myself, Guy Horn, chairman, and we have William Scanlon, our town planner, who's on the phone with us because he's out of town. First item on our agenda for this evening is the approval of minutes, but I believe the minutes are not complete yet, right? So, okay, so we'll skip over the minutes. The next thing on our agenda, we have two A and Rs. The first one is Dennis Parada, Woodmere Road, West Main Street, Resa Middle. Do you have those plans up there? Is there another page to this, too?
Yeah, page two has a topography on it, the contour lines, and the profile.
I think Bill was telling me, this is the, this is the actual, and this is the proposed. And then he was saying, these two lines here are
Oh, the slope's cut through.
Are the two points where they're cutting through. Because you see how close the topography, how close the lines of the contour lines are? Drops off like, yeah, it drops off like crazy. So in order to get
Do you have the application for this?
In order to get to the six percent grade from this whole
There is a song, I sent it on there.
Cut down through it, right? So what does that do to your sight line coming out of there?
You'd have to cut way back. It's not even feasible.
You say this right online?
Put back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the email. All right.
Are you looking for
Yeah.
His form here, the A and R? Or are you looking for the checklist?
Checklist.
Oh, checklist's right there.
Okay.
Let's go, one, two, three, four, five waivers.
What'd you find? I couldn't find that. So, do you see any upland calculations on this anywhere?
No.
Okay.
Because I don't know if that's required for an A and R, because you're just splitting the property, right?
Topographic information taken from LiDAR data by the two thousand sixteen USGS. I can't even say that. Topo bath geometric model? Fifteen eighty-seven. That's provided by the National Land Administration.
Are any waivers being asked for, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, so right
A number of them.
Right now, um Two signed improperly executed Form As and one A and R checklist that's being asked for a waiver, but it appears that we have that. So I would say that that's not correct. The first waiver is six A, which is the data table, including the zoning district and Minimum lot area. I saw some of that on here. But there's also the calculated buildable area per lot. And they don't s- build factor. A and R boundaries. Names and address of owners and of butters, that's there. It's at, they're asking for a waiver on that. Name of streets, oh no, name and streets, numbers of all the butters.
Location of wetlands.
Yeah, just those two waivers?
Nope, the, uh Topography, that's there, that's asked for a waiver. Frontage and lot area remaining Remaining land from which the proposed lots has been created, that's okay. Location of wetland resources and the proposed lots, any upland calculations. If there are none, then a statement, there are no wetlands must appear in the notes. Evidence that each existing building lot created has adequate access, including frontage.
Including access from to the site.
All profiles of existing grades. So I would say that this checklist is not
Upgraded.
Not updated.
That was the original checklist that came in with the, uh, first plan.
The first plan, okay.
Yeah, it's Is there a revised version, Bill?
No.
Okay, so we're looking at the thing that we saw last.
Yeah, December ninth, two thousand
The checklist is the same, is the same, but the plans have been updated.
Oh, how so?
So...
The waivers for, uh, driveway, and driveway profile are no longer necessary because they are provided on the plan.
Right.
Sorry, could you repeat that again, Bill?
Yeah, the, the original checklist had waivers for capacity and the driveway profile. Now that those are provided on the plan, it's a longer estimate.
Where's the driveway profile?
They're on page two.
They're in that, that graph on the upper left-hand portion of, the upper right-hand portion.
Upper right-hand portion.
These two little blocks that say Lot One, uh, Lot Three Profile, Lot Two Profile.
Okay.
Uh, is
That, that access off one ninety-seven?
Yeah, I'll show you, here. So, what you're doing is, where these lines are right here, that's one.
Yeah.
And that's the other. So they're showing that's where they're, that's where they want to come in.
Yeah.
This line represents the actual topography right now, and this line represents, once they excavate, what they intend to get, down to the six percent on this one and down to the five point two six on the other.
All right, forgive my question if it's already answered here, but this is one ninety-seven is a state road, right?
Yeah.
Uh, any driveway access off a state road, is that ours to determine, or is that the Mass Department of Transportation?
They need to get Mass TPW to give them a curb cut.
Uh, I'm very disturbed just at looking at that, because you're looking at that bend in one ninety-seven. Uh, and I can recall two selectmen's meetings not that long ago, where the police chief highlighted this, this road as one of great danger, I think was the word, he mentioned, specifically two overro- rollover accidents. And then cutting into that Just, uh
I don't know.
Uh, there's no chance that you, you folks want to come in the other way from Woodmere?
I don't think they have access.
I don't think that would be possible because the house is Has the frontage is on West Main.
So what I'm, what I'm seeing missing is Any wetlands delineations, or a letter that says that there is none. And I don't see any build factors on either one of these lots.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to ride the horse a little longer here. Uh, the way the terminology reads here, building lots created as adequate access, adequate in my mind means safe access. And I question whether that is the case in this instance.
Uh, couldn't Couldn't you have a common driveway come in along the side, along this side of the house on Woodmere here? And provide access to the two lots, and just have the frontage on one ninety-seven, but not actually be the access to the lots, because we've got that. I asked that question once before. I thought you couldn't do that, because remember on Mason Road?
But it was removed.
But it was removed.
Right.
So couldn't, couldn't they do that?
It's possible.
What do you mean, the setbacks? They got twenty point nine.
That's like a twenty-nine and a half feet to the left of that house.
Driveway setbacks only two feet. And zoning. Setback for driveways, two feet.
Yeah, I mean, I think there are some issues with the whole idea that's being presented here. To Mr. Clark's point, if you wanted to get access, safe access from Route one ninety-seven, based on the profiles there, I would almost say to flip the lot sizes between one and three, so you're having more of a access from the flatter portion of the site and not from the steep portion. But be that as it may, in my opinion, we have a revised plan, but we don't have a revised application. It's not accurately reflecting what we're looking at. I used to say that we do not accept this at this point in time, and it has to be, it has to be updated.
I'd like to make one other comment, just noticing here, you see how they're showing Woodmere Road kind of comes down and dead ends here? Um, I went down that street on Monday, and it's like a straight shot into that driveway.
Yes.
It's almost, it's almost as if like
It's like the extension of the driveway.
Yeah, you know?
Yeah.
So it's kind of, uh
Yeah, if like, may, uh, just to remind the board, it wasn't that long ago, we had an applicant on West Main who was further up and where the road is relatively flat and straight, if you will. And the thought that we would be seeing multiple commercial vehicles using that property on the course of the day caused us great concern. I think we're at a point now where we're looking at a section of road that in and of itself causes great concern. And if this is to be developed commercially, what traffic is there likely to be? Uh, in all, I, that possibility exists that it might be greater than the traffic that we would have seen on that other property further along West Main, where the applicant indicated it would be minimal, I think in the order of eight to six or something like that, per day. This
You're still there, Bill? Bill?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Sure.
Come up.
That lower, that lower, uh The, the low one at five point six, I actually have a picture of it. I was able to stand on the other side. Just a little jump, and it's below the curb. So if somebody wanted to, to go into this low, below the curb, and shoot a, another line up above, all I want is to be able to split the lots. When somebody wants to do something with it, let them come in with their, uh engineers and everybody else and bulldozers and do, find other things. I just want to split the two lots and But again, back to this picture, and I, I left one with Mr. Scanlon that even was better, because it showed the one ninety-seven sign and the curb above, above this lower
That's the one on Lot Three, right?
Yeah, the, the lowest one, right.
Yeah, the lowest one. The, the, your biggest problem here is the Lot Two one. The Lot Two one is the one that's got this huge drop off that would take a big cut.
Well, like you say, there's all kinds of things engineers can do. You come in in that lower lot and, and drive, uh You know, there's, there's always two driveways off of one, happens a lot.
You, you, you live in the house on Lot One, correct?
Yeah, right, I don't, right now, but yeah.
How long have you lived there?
Twenty-five years, my sister did, actually.
All right, so do you know the history of this property? Do you know what, what this is on this plan that was given to us? It's
That's supposed to be
This is nineteen sixty-five?
Yeah, I saw that. It's supposed to be This thing here?
This, yeah, what is this?
This was a proposed road, I guess, when there was nothing there at all. And it was supposed to, maybe it was supposed to get rid of this curb. That's the only that guy could think of, is they were going to do another one here. But then the courthouse here put a stop to that road coming out here, that's for sure.
So, so I walked into this property from one ninety-seven on Monday.
Okay.
And I walked up into here.
Yeah.
And there is an area cleared.
Yeah, it is, still cleared.
Like, right where this is.
Right.
So
You could come in down here below this curb and get on that and go up there. That's what I was going to say.
So you think they actually started to build the road like this, and then they stopped and went to this?
For whatever reason they did, I don't know.
Okay.
Up there.
It was, like you say, when our house was put up there, it was one of the few ones. But you can see how nice and
Right, so when you get up here and you get to this
Down here, yeah.
Yeah. There's a gully on the side of this. And there's water running down.
That's the engineer's issue.
Starts up.
Going for a
Starts up near the house here. And it runs down this whole thing, and it goes into a culvert, goes underneath one ninety-seven, and empties onto the other side.
So, Bill, this is Dan, my question is, is it under our pur- purview right now to be discussing access to the site? Or is this an A and R, or is it just concerned with meeting zoning requirements?
My question is Your engineer says there's no wetlands here?
Who says there's no wetlands? It's, uh, the only thing we did is we went on this website
Yeah.
Called Mass Mappers.
Okay, but I'm just letting, you know, you're probably going to have to go before conservation.
Oh, probably, yeah. Like you say, my interest is to get the two lots, sell them, let it be somebody else's problem with their engineers. And they'll go through all this building.
All right, we, we, excuse me, but we've had two things going right now, and we're kind of losing, losing Bill in the process, at least.
My apologies.
Bill, could you start over, because you're, you're, you're
Breaking up.
You're breaking up here.
Okay, so the point of the A and R plan, uh, process is to determine whether a plan shows a subdivision within the meaning of the subdivision control law. So the A and R plan, if it shows the new lots have adequate, have the amount of furniture required by zoning, and if there's adequate access to the two lots, then they don't need to submit a subdivision plan. But if you feel that the access is not adequate, then you would deny the estimate that the plan shows a subdivision, and therefore the applicant would need to go through the full subdivision plan process. And adequate access is usually determined by whether emergency vehicles are able to get into the property, ambulances, trucks, that kind of thing, uh, to service, uh, the lot if necessary.
I, I would just raise one other question, and perhaps the applicant would know. Adjacent to or behind the courthouse, it looks like detention or retention pond of some sort?
Is a pond behind the courthouse?
Well, there appears, there's an area that is fenced in. There's a lot of those catanine tails growing in there, so it's a wet area. And there is a rather large opening, if you will, at one end of that, that goes into this property. And I can show that to you here.
Yeah, well, that's a different property.
But that's, yeah, but that's a
Under, underwater there now, but there probably has or will be.
So the reason
I don't know where you're talking about on the property itself.
Okay. By the words, like, whatever that retention, detention pond is, if you will, adjacent to the courthouse, apparently this is the outlet for it, should that apparently be over, over whatever limit it has. And that water will go right into that property, or these properties that we're looking at here. There's no place else for it to go.
Right, but we're not, I think that's still under conservation and not really
Yeah, sure, no, all right, then. Conservation, maybe you want to take a look at this, a hard look at this.
This is a highway, right, this is state road. Can we even make a determination if we can have access?
That's, that's, that's not up to us either. It's just, are we dividing, is he dividing the land properly in the Town of Dudley's eyes, which he says he has enough?
Isn't enough frontage.
Right, and whether he can get access to this property through that frontage remains to be seen with the state, not us.
Okay, so what about upland calculations not being on here?
The, yeah, the upland calculations are not here.
I don't see a wet
What zone is, one's in business fifteen and one's in
LI forty-three?
One's forty-three.
Light Industry forty-three. Need any, what is it, an acre?
Yeah, so I mean, one's fif- one's business fifteen, and one is
One's partly in business fifteen.
Right, one's partly in business fifteen and, and a light industrial forty-three, and the other one's in tot- entirely in light industrial forty-three, if I read that correctly.
I don't think there'd be a problem with Lot Three as far as industrial forty-three goes, because you've got more than double the land there.
And you're two hundred feet.
But the lot, the Lot Two is only fifty thousand square feet.
But it's sheltering two hundred feet of that.
Right, but what I was saying is the bill factor, um, Bill, that's, that's calculating, it's like uplands and the upland calculation and the bill factor is, is, is the lot buildable?
Right, that really depends on, uh, there's a, an upland requirement which says you have to have a minimum buildable area, at least seventy-five percent of the minimum lot size.
So what does Lot Two become if it's now divided between light industry, uh, LI forty-three, and business fifteen? What does it become? Does it remain both?
Well, in proposing a use for that lot, um, if the use is permitted in both districts, then there's no problem. If it's only permitted in one district, then you need to put the use in that district. And not, and not have it extend more than three feet into the other. So it depends, it depends on the proposed use. If it's just a retail use, for example, that would be allowed in the fif- fifteen district. And you'd have to put it in that district.
Or if it was a residence, you'd have to put it in the business fifteen district, because you're not allowed, um, residential building.
Yeah, we'd put it in LI forty-three.
No.
Correct.
So
Okay.
It's kind of like where the house is, the house on the
Yeah.
Is in the residential section, the backyard is in the Light Industrial. So if somebody could use that lot like that, if they wanted to build a house there, but I, I don't know when any
And it has sixty-seven feet in light industrial.
All right, it's the board's pleasure. We could, we could We, we could ask for the new checklist to be filled out, or we could just, I think the only thing that I'm seeing that's really missing is the build factor. We can waive it. I mean, they're going to have to pr- they're going to have to produce that before they build anything on the lot to the building department, because they're going to want to see it.
Yeah, okay, hopefully Conservation will take a hard look, too. Is this, there's a but, Conservation Land Trust property.
Right.
Well, I, I still don't like that. They're not indicating any wetlands on this property.
Yeah.
And they're basically saying, well, we don't think there's wetlands there because we've looked at Mass Mapper, correct?
Is it, I don't see any note on that.
But there's no note on this, exactly. So if the engineer wants to stick his neck out and say
There's no wet
There's no wetlands here, then the engineer needs to put, put in black and white on his plan. And if there are, then flag them, because you're going to have to do it anyways. And then you can, you can do a proper upland calculation, once you know where those are. Because, I mean, Richard and I walked this, we know what we saw out there. But I can't tell you exactly where it is. I know when I walked up that roadbed, or whatever the heck it is, as far as I could, it, it turns into a real mess, like it gets blocked off once you come up to the back of the courthouse property. And when you're standing over here, I look to the right, and I can see the chain link fence of his yard. So I know I'm right behind this house.
So it's definitely on Lot Two, what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And that's the lot, that's the smallest of
I believe it's on Lot Two, and I believe it runs across Lot Three down to
West Main Street.
West Main Street. Part of it might even be on the, uh, this prop, this next lot over that says the Dean and, Dean and Out of Trust. Because, uh, where I, when I followed it down this way to one ninety-seven, and I came out onto one ninety-seven, I was right before the next bend in the road.
All right, Mr. Parada, would you be willing to ta- take this to your engineer and see if he would make a statement on the wetlands, or flag the wetlands?
I would, yeah, just, I, I would just like to split it, let, like you say, let the next person deal with it, whatever it is. It, it may never It may never be anything.
We just don't want to create lots that end up not being able to be anything, correct? I mean, that's
It doesn't really matter. If there's, I mean, if the state doesn't give a curb cut, then, then the only way to get to it is through Woodmere. They'd have to re- redo this anyways.
Oh, what's, what's the board's pleasure?
Honestly, I would say, in my opinion, I would say we split it, we, we waive the, we waive the wetlands. Let him split it, and then, like, if he has to do something in the future, he's got to go through many more, jump through many more hoops than what we're putting in front of him.
No, I agree. I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, I believe this is, this is your first step. He wants to divide it up, and then he wants to see if something can be done with it, either through an engineer, see if anybody's interested in buying or not. We don't know at this point in time if it's going to go anyplace, but this is the first step for him. And I, I don't personally think there's going to be any access. I don't think Lot Number Two is going to have any feasible access from, uh, Main Street. But that doesn't stop, that doesn't, that's, my opinion doesn't mean that you can't, don't have the right to go on and investigate it, so I'm
Which begs the question, why, why even divide it? Why not just try and market it the way it is to somebody?
Not my choice.
Because it's attached to the house, it's a third lot.
No, I, I understand Lot One.
No.
I understand breaking out Lot One, because it's the house. But I'm, I'm wondering, why didn't you just split this into Lots Two and Three? Why not just leave this whole one parcel as one big parcel and market it that way? Because you're create, you're creating two lots here, and if the, if this Lot Two ends up being un- You know, unmarketable, if you can't do anything with it, you just created an extra tax bill for yourself.
Right, but he can come back and re- and combine them again, right?
Right.
Yeah, I guess so.
It's okay.
All right.
Empty lands, not that much.
Would you be looking for a, a motion on the plan of land? Owner, Dennis C. Parada, one Woodmere Road, Dudley, Mass. D book six-six-seven-one-one, page fifty-seven, Plan Book five-seventy-six, Plan eighteen.
Excuse me, just a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I, are you the owner of the state?
No, it's actually, he's my son. He lives in Indiana.
He lives in Indiana, so he's no longer resident of one Woodmere Road, and doesn't
He will be, you know
Oh, he's coming back.
His plan is, uh, in another year, he's going to be sixty-two or something like that. Yeah, sixty-two. Plan is to use that house to retire later. In the meantime, I'll probably live there.
So that checklist is not correct, so how many waivers do we need?
We need the waiver, we need the waiver for the, uh
Five, six.
We need the waiver for the topography, which was what number was that, six?
No, we don't need a waiver. The topography show
We have the topography. We need a waiver for the wetland delineation.
Okay.
For the wetland, this is
Waiver for access.
Number of wetlands.
Proposed access to the lot.
We don't need that one, because we, they've got that.
Location of wetlands. Topography
Are there wetlands?
Street numbers of all the butters. I don't think there are any butters, are there? I mean, it's
They're on, they're on here, the butters are on here.
Okay. Who signed originally, property owners are all there.
So it's basically the wetlands and the bill factor would be the only two waivers.
Okay.
There are no wetlands on lot number must be applied in the plan, no.
So let's start out with a motion to, to approve the two waivers. What, one, the, um, wetland delineation, and the other one would be the, um, the bill factor for the two lots.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that for this A and R plan, we approve two waivers, one for the wetland upland and one for the buildable, buildable area.
So a motion, do we have a second?
Can we split that in one and one? Make a motion for the wetland?
If we need, we need both waivers to get this going, right, so?
We need both waivers?
Yeah. Which one do you not want to?
The wetlands. As you said, documented that there's no wetland on the property.
Yeah, I, I, I have to agree. My concern is, again, that somehow we're
He's going to sell it, and then it's going to come back to us, but what would, yes.
If he sold it, somebody, somebody wants to do something, they got to go, they got to go to the engineer and get it all flagged and go to Conservation.
Yeah, I know.
All he's doing is creating two more lots out of one giant lot.
But should be presented in notes that there's no wetland. That what G says.
Yeah.
There are no wetlands on lot numbers must be paired in the plan, no.
Well, I, I, I guess one, we could, could look at it this way, Tom, the fact that he hasn't stated it on the Well, I, I, I guess one, we could, could look at it this way, Tom. The fact that he hasn't stated it on the plan is basically admitting that there's a possibility it is there. And then we could just follow up Conservation and make sure that whoever comes before Conservation.
Yeah, but you give them a waiver on the wetlands.
No, no, we're getting a waiver on, on them delineating. We're basically waiving, showing, excuse me.
Delineating.
Knowing it.
On the plan.
We're not, we're not waiving, we're not saying that they don't exist.
All right.
We're not waving that they have to. Right. We're not saying they never have to do it, we're just saying.
His engineer's implying they don't exist with the.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have a motion that seems to fail for lack of a second, second.
Second, right.
Oh, I, so make the motion again, I'll second it.
Yeah, I, I think I should amend the motion, maybe, that to approve two waivers for the A and R plan, the first one being for the buildable area, and the second being for the delineation, or the showing on the plan, the wetland area.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, voting on the waivers?
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
All right. Okay, if you have one abstention, Mr. Chinaki, you abstaining, or?
No.
He voted aye.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Oh, I got it.
All right, so now the, um, we need a motion on, on approving the, uh, A and R plan for One Wood, One Woodmere Road in Dudley, Mass.
Dan should do it, he's on a roll.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the A and R plan for One Woodmere Road.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
Abstain.
We have one abstention, Mr. Chinaki abstaining, vote. Okay, so we have to sign two copies of this? Is there a place for us to sign? I hope there is.
We, uh, we have a milar over there.
Paper copies, so one milar. If you abstain, you don't have to sign.
Uh, having an abstain. Okay. Mr. Chinaki, here.
I got it. Okay. Make sure that those two come, that's the one.
You need to get one, sign those. Is one taken, Joe?
Yep, two sheets. Dan, could you sign these two, our copies?
Two sheets, the other one.
Okay, so Bill, we keep the, we keep the art copies, the paper copies, and he takes the milar, milar, right?
Yes, I would suggest that you record both copies of, of milar copies.
There's only, there's only places for us to sign on the page one of the milar, the page two is not.
Yeah, but I think you should record both, both sheets.
We should sign both sheets?
No, no, you won't be required. But we can think that since we quite, was to show the topography and the driveway profile, that that should be recorded along with the milar.
Right, so when, sir, when you go to the registry, you should, you should, uh, file both sheets.
All right.
Okay? So that one's gonna be for you to take, the milar. That's what you need for the registry. Okay.
Yes, it does.
All right, our next item on the agenda is, uh, A and R Plans B, Robert O'Meara, Ten Bates Road.
Can I make a motion that we accept?
All I need.
Well, we got the engineer here, so.
Yeah, we still have another trick.
I thought the idea of these tablets was to look at things before the meeting. You did.
Okay.
Are there any waivers associated with this?
Nothing.
Two, uh, for the topo and the profile.
Okay, on the, uh, application, it looks like there's spaces just left blank as opposed to having been populated with a W.
Yeah, I guess so.
So can you explain this plan, what, what you're actually doing here?
So the existing lot, just breaking off one lot out of it, uh, proposed lot A. A little bit more than double the area, a hundred feet of frontage, uh, leaving the existing house on the other lot. From the road to the rear property line, it's about three hundred seventy feet, drops twenty feet in elevation, so it's about five percent pitch. So there's no issue with getting a driveway in there or anything.
Right.
No wellens, pretty much all existing yard right now.
We do have a note, about, about wetlands.
Yeah, and there's a hundred percent upland and.
How is this zone, where's the zoning for this one, I think?
It's in the corner, it's a little, in a little bunny, it's reds fifteen.
Reds fifteen.
It's in the box.
In the box.
It's not in.
Reds fifteen, single family.
Mr. Chinaki has a regular nice.
Yeah.
Not, not really.
Sounds like it's more like a drawdown, isn't it?
Seventy fifty there.
It is so nice outside, too. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the A and R plan as presented with the two waivers. Too early?
Nope, what, I just wanted to make sure you were gonna ask for the wa, you were gonna put the.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it, 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 it looks like they're blank. Are those blanks indication that they are asking for waivers?
We just write it down.
Just a clerical error. He needs to put a W in, future reference. You wanna put a W where you're asking for the waiver.
I didn't fill it out, but I will remember that.
Yeah, somebody else did.
So what were the two, what were the two waivers?
Topography?
Topography.
Gonna get it back.
And then, what was the second one?
What was the delineation?
The profile.
Oh, profile.
Prof, yeah, cause it says a hundred percent upland on both of them.
Okay.
So the blanks are intended to be Ws.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we need, we need the profiles of, of existing grades and the topography.
Unless we waive them.
Right.
Right, the motion would be accepting the two waivers. I mean, this is as straightforward as it gets for an A and R. It's more.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Is that a, a vote?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, okay. The phone's not keeping. We need to sign two copies. Uh, it's just signed copies here.
We have one over here, it's a signature. Did you guys get those signed already?
Yeah, it's two of them.
Okay.
You working with them now?
I am. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
You should sign both, right?
Five, six.
Ready to go.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, review draft Stevens Mill decision and possible actions included. So we have one copy here.
So, Mr. Chairman, in reading through the draft copy of the Stevens Mill decision, um, I noted that an item that I brought up twice in once the last meeting regarding the storm water, the building storm water for the roof, uh, has not been, uh, included.
Okay.
And I would, um, ask that it be included.
Bill, do you think we could get Mr. Edmiston's concern in with the storm water?
Yes, I can, um, certainly on condition that, uh, the applicant, you know, provide information to the, uh, the roof runoff and demonstrate that the existing system and/or the proposed system is adequate to handle the, uh, the installation from the development.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think for the public's information, we should note that included in that, uh, document was reference to, preference to Dudley, Dudley residents within the.
Yeah.
I guess the guidelines, the legal guidelines that would allow such.
That was gonna be my next question for Bill. Do you think we need to go through and read all this now, or can we wait till you make the updates and then read it all at once? Cause I think it's like sixteen pages here.
So, first of all, Dan, do you have any specific wording you, you concluded, or you want me to add something up?
The only thing I would like to see in there specific would be having the roof stormwater system tied into the infiltration. Uh, my concern is that if they try to use existing, or if it's not addressed, it's just going to be, uh, drained directly into the river. And I don't think that's what we want.
Okay, so to answer your question, guys, um, I can add that condition, uh, to the decision. And then if you wanna vote on the decision tonight, you could, uh, vote, you know, as a, with the amendment. Or if you have a rest decision, add it one more time, do that, we could, uh, you know, postpone it to the next year when you have to.
Right, so if we were gonna vote on it tonight, we need to read all sixteen pages here?
Well, I, I assume so, yes, because, you know, I want you to be comfortable with, with the decision. If you have to sign it, so you shouldn't sign something, have it read.
Well, does that mean read it out loud for the record, or read it just for ourselves?
No, you don't need to read it out loud.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, um, I don't know, it's the board's pleasure. My, my thought is if we're gonna add Mr. Edmiston's, um, stormwater addition, we can wait till we get that, and then we can vote on it at that point?
I would concur.
So my only concern is, is that, um, I'm out of town at our next meeting.
Okay.
And our next meeting is my last meeting. So if we don't vote, I won't, I won't be here to vote, and then the board will have, I don't know, another member who can't vote.
All right, so why don't we vote on it, Ben, and then we'll just, we'll, we, we won't, Bill, we won't hand this over to the, uh, applicant until, um, we, we vote on it, Mr. Mr., um, Edmiston could come back and sign off on it once we get the paperwork done, right?
Yes.
Okay, so would that be okay? You would come back, you would come back to sign off on it?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so, um, this is basically, we're voting on, uh, special permit and site plan approval decision, Stevens Mill redevelopment, Stevens Mill owner LLC. These are basically all the, uh, now, were there waivers still listed in here, Bill? I didn't get through all of it.
Yeah, the waivers.
It had, the applicant had requested two waivers.
Right.
One, one for purpose, which has now been withdrawn because they do show adequate. And the other waiver is, is the applicant, uh, Mr. Madouse, who sends in a letter, uh, requesting that the other waiver we made.
Okay, so we have, they have one waiver basically they're asking for.
And that was the parking areas being in the front end?
Yeah.
And the side setback or something similar?
Yeah.
Bill, just for information, do you know if that, uh, whatever agreement they were working out with the, uh, other property owner adjacent to them, uh, on the Mill Street side of things? Has that fi, been finalized yet, do you know?
Uh, I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, seems to be a long time coming.
Yeah, so I did, I did put that in the decision, that, uh, that be.
Yeah, before the vote, the vote, I can talk, before the board votes or discusses, and further, I'd like to point out that, uh, we had a lot of meetings on this from, I think it was December or November of last year to this point here. And, uh, in reading over through the sixteen pages earlier today, I think that Bill did an excellent job of capturing the history of, of everything we've gone through. And I just, not, not only the, um, important decisions, but also discussions and even all the documents that were submitted, so excellent job, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh, if that's a motion, I'll, I'll second it.
So basically, we're voting, voting on the orders of conditions and waivers for the special permit and site plan approval decision on Stevens Mill redevelopment, Stevens Mill owner LLC.
On page nine of the decision, you'll see the, the waiver that is still being requested.
Right.
At the location of the house.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess we, we need wording to that effect, Mr. Chairman. Not sure what that's gonna sound like.
Basically, voting on, on the orders of condition for the special permit and site plan approval decision, Stevens Mill redevelopment, Stevens Mill owner LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special permit and order of conditions as, uh, presented this evening for the Stevens Mill redevelopment.
With the, with the addition of Mr.
With the addition of Mr. Edmiston's concern, a question about storm water.
Okay, so we have, we have that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
So we have, um, four, four, one, one abstention, Mr. Chinaki's abstaining. So we will, uh, Bill, when you get back, if we can get that, uh, one addition, one additional condition added in here, then we'll all come in and sign off on that?
Yes, I'll let you know when I've done that, uh, and then you can come down and sign it.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's get to the new business, the standard business discussion status reports and finishing construction of acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Piazza Road, Country View Estates, Tobin Farms, and Lyons Estates. I think we can take Piazza Road off the list, because I believe it was accepted at town meeting, unless the, uh, unless the Attorney General comes back and tells us there's a problem, it should be accepted.
Yeah, so I will, uh, provide to you the form, uh, to release the remaining amount of security, in the security account, so that we can return the funds to the.
Okay, won't that, won't that happen right after the Attorney General approves the, uh?
I'm not sure the AG approves, uh, three sentences, they only approve, uh, by law changes.
Oh, okay, okay, so then we should be all set then, right now?
I believe so.
Okay, and then if we're all set, yeah, we can return the money that's in the escrow account.
There's a form, uh, so I'll, I'll present that form to you at the next meeting.
Okay. So for those that weren't present at the meeting on last Tuesday, um, Mr. Petrover and I went to the meeting with the town administrator and some of the selectmen. And it was basically on Tobin Farms, Misty Meadows, and, um, Patriot Shale. So Patriot Shale, I believe, got approved at the town meeting. So that looks like that one's gonna be off the list, although it wasn't on this list. Uh, but that's a previously unfinished subdivision that will be finished, and the, the homeowners are agreeable to that. The, um, Tobin Farms Estates, uh, we're gonna take another look at that one. That one came in with almost a half a million dollars and, um, needed. That one came in with almost a half a million dollars and needed improvements to finish the subdivision per the...
Potentially, allegedly.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to take another look at that one. And the other one was the Misty Meadow ones, it wasn't a half a million dollars, it was like two hundred and eighty thousand if I remember right. The problem with Misty Meadows is there's an awful lot of road and there's very few homes on the street, so they're looking, they were looking at like two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of improvements that needed to be made and it's basically all asphalt. And there's only ten houses that would be contributing to that, so it's a huge per, per lot.
She figured it out and it came to twenty-nine thousand per person, but then when you added in the interest over the time of the, um, the loan, it came to like forty-five thousand dollars per, per house, not per person, I meant, per lot.
So we need to take another look at that, I've, I've already talked to them.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to ask Bill if he has any timeline on the information that was requested by the Tobin Farms people and by myself and Mr. Horn as far as the detailed information of exactly what they're getting for that four hundred and ninety thousand, so we can see if there's anything on that list that we can work with. Because I, as, as of, as of yesterday, uh, I talked to one of the people, they haven't received any email with any information yet.
As I understand it, Steve, Partridge Hill is going to go out to bid soon, since that was at the town meeting, Highway Superintendent will be putting that package together, and that's going to be fairly soon. The other two developments, we, for, you know, information to help them decide whether they wanna proceed so that they can make that call at the next fall town meeting. I understand that the planning board will receive the, the bidding for those two projects before it goes out to bid, and then you have an opportunity to review the things that's done. I don't have an exact timeframe as to when you'll get that, but there'll be something Highway Superintendent will be working on it. We'll get it to you as soon as we can.
So I think there might be some misunderstanding here, Bill, what, what, what I think we wanted and what I think the residents want is we just want Graves' itemized list of what he came up with for where did that four hundred and ninety thousand dollars come from? We don't have that right now?
I believe Highway Superintendent has it, and, and the, the prices that he, or that he saw, that he developed, showed the savings that would approve by the town to lift some of the work, for example, using the, uh, the town contracts for paving price for the paving work.
Right, but there's no paving, there's no paving in Tobin Farms.
Right, but there, I don't recall exactly what was on that list, but...
There was nothing on the list, I'm gonna lose it. I'm gonna lose it.
There was just a paper that said, you know, basically that there was, you know, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of cost needed.
Yes, and he, and he provided that, I believe, to one of the developments, the original estimate from Graves, which is a much higher number than the number that he came up with. Uh, made some significant estimates I used in that class.
You're chopping up again, Bill, a little bit.
Sorry about that, so it's a combination of Graves' original estimate, which Jeff, which Jeff has and he provided to, I know, one of the subdivisions. But the other component is what the town will be able to save the residents by using pound prices for some of the work.
We couldn't get simple answers like, how much sidewalk are they getting? We couldn't get that simple answer.
Yes, yes, Jeff has information, Jeff, uh...
Good, when can Jeff share that information with the planning board?
And, and the residents?
I'll ask him for it, Stephen, get it to you.
Well, it's been asked for.
Yeah.
Well, he's got it, I don't have it, so I have to get it to him.
Okay.
All right.
It was talk of an email that was gonna go out to the residents, and I said, "Well, I'd like to see it, too."
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
It's a reasonable request.
All right, so that takes care of, was there any other information this week from any of the other unfinished ones? Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Tobin, we already did Tobin, Lion Estates?
Wasn't there something at Pierpon?
On Pierpon, I just got something in today, site visit report from Graves that paving took place this week for the base, the binder for, for that unfinished section of road.
Okay.
And it's not pending that, um, that Graves would be preparing an estimate to complete that portion of the road. And then following that would be financial security provided by the carer to secure the completion of that, in the amount of Graves' asset. Uh, so that's in the works right now.
Okay, and then after that, I'm assuming he would want lot releases for that section?
Yes, as soon as we, the security in place is approved, then he requests lot releases.
Okay. All right, so that takes care of those subdivisions, um, number two, inspections and actions associated with site plans. We got Legacy Landing, Country Club Acres, S and, SEP Solar, Oxford Ave, J D and D, twenty-four Oxford Ave. Any information on those, Bill?
No, I don't have any information.
Okay. Move it over, planers plate, anything on your planners plate?
Did I need to write up, it's a little more solid, I'll try to get that to you at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Uh, and then something like that, get that rolling, well.
What'd you say, solar next week? With the Indian Road?
The, the landfill, solar, he approved it, so we gotta, he's gotta write up the conditions of approval and all that, so we can sign off on that.
Indian Road, seven foot six.
The other thing I, although I haven't got confirmation yet, is that they approved the Sherwood basis man for the airport road, uh, project.
Yep.
Uh, I haven't, haven't seen anything in writing yet, but I foretold that that was approved, so...
Okay.
What was approved?
The money for the...
No, no, I understand the money part of it, but what specifically were the, what's, where's the detail on that? Because I know that was under discussion, I didn't realize that that thing was a final presentation. This is when Fay was in here for us?
Well, that was, the star was what was submitted, uh, but now we'll need to redo the consulting for that work.
Okay.
So the president...
Is that something we would take action on in terms of a motion and, and vote on? Or is that something that is just, has a life of its own?
Yeah, it's not a, we issue it, they're already public way, so it's, within the jurisdiction of the Highway Department to, uh, to clear it up.
So the Highway Department made the determination in terms of what was going forward?
Yes.
Uh, maybe Mr. Murray would be good enough to share that bit of information with us. I had some questions regarding the way that was laid out, and if I remember correctly, I, my thought was you needed sidewalks on both sides.
So, last time, that, um, we, we planned it before, so there's an opportunity to see whether that can be done.
All right, just a point of information, I live on Airport Road, my mailbox was launched about ten to fifteen feet and my neighbor's mailbox probably went a good forty feet. Uh, they're not aerodynamic in any sense, so it took a little bit of force on the part of somebody's motor vehicle to do that. And that is on the side of the road where you're looking to put a sidewalk, delivering people to a dangerous, by definition, intersection. You need the sidewalk maybe there, but on the other side, definitely. And it, I don't recall that we did anything with regards to the parking lot. I mean, what I've seen and observed very recently is people come to the stop sign, the golf course parking lot is there, they say, "Oh, I'm going into the parking lot, I don't need to stop," and they go right through. You know, there's no signage there, there's no indication as to what they're to do coming in or going out of that parking lot. And then we're talking about the den Nichols College proposes in terms of putting a bunch of students, if you will, in what is going to be a alcohol-serving facility, uh, again, located at a dangerous intersection. Uh, there was some mention of taking the Board of Selectmen in terms of bringing Nichols College in for discussion. I've heard nothing further on that either.
So, Bill, the final design on this is not complete, correct?
Yeah.
That's, yes, that's what it is.
So when they do come up with the final design, would they, would they present it to the town again? Would they present it to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, or how would it hap, how would it work?
Yes, I'm pretty sure, oh, there would be public information meeting on this sign that everybody could attend.
Okay.
And, uh...
Okay, but if the money's already been approved, then something exists in terms of a final product, right? Because...
No, they have to design it first.
All right, well, what, money has been approved then, without a complete design.
They're gonna design within the budget that they...
Design within the budget, all right, let's see what that all looks like. It just seems that some of these things have a life apart from what we think we might be involved in. I don't know, Mr. Witrover, maybe I'm off base with that. It seems to be the case with the Tobin Farms issue as, as a point of in, information, if you will. They can kind of bring them back home again.
I just have to exercise more patience, apparently.
Oh, well, I'm starting to lose some of mine, maybe it's moving this way from your side of the room.
Okay, is that all you have, Bill? Yep?
Yep.
Okay, I don't think we're gonna have any, yeah, audience, any, any comments from the planning board?
Nope.
Going to candidate's night?
Oh, yes.
I'm not going to candidate's night?
You're not?
I'm not going.
What, what was the date on that, the sixth?
I think so, yes.
And the election is what, the thirteenth?
I should know that, I guess, huh?
In any event, we have an upcoming candidate's night and an election to follow thereafter, so anybody who's out there in the public and cares to participate at candidate's night and soon thereafter the election. Couple of seats on this board are up for election.
I will say that town meeting was on Monday night, that went pretty well, um, we had three articles, two of the three were passed. One was, we asked one to be passed over and that one was taken up at, at the town meeting and voted, and voted down. So that one's where it is right now. Uh, the other, the other two for the zoning changes, one for the, um, the Water Aquifer Protection District, that was passed, and the other one for one thirty-one Business Overlay District, that was passed. So that takes care of the homeowners that want to have businesses on one thirty-one. Other business, our next scheduled meeting is gonna be for June eighth at seven PM, right here. And Bill, you have approvals, uh, some approvals needed for vouchers tonight?
Can I, can I just ask, before we get to that item?
Yep.
To talk about your summer schedule?
Sure.
Normally, you listen in July and August, and you want to, you know, meet just once those months, and which meetings you would like to set?
My preference would be if we, if we met once in July and August, that we have the meetings at the end of the month because we'll be away from the holidays. Or at least the Fourth of July.
Fourth of July is on a Monday.
Yeah.
Uh, what are you looking, the twenty-seventh of July? That would be, you know, Wednesday.
Well, we could put it right in the middle, but I think it's harder to change, change two meetings. Let's just, right now, in July, we would have it on the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, so we could cancel the thirteenth of July and then cancel August, I think it's tenth?
August tenth, and then meet on the seventeenth.
Would that be all right, Bill, we cancel the thirteenth of July and August tenth meeting?
Yes.
So the, the first meeting of July and the first meeting of August will be canceled for the summer.
So get ready the eighth.
That's fine.
We wouldn't meet on the eighth.
We would meet in June on the eighth, still.
We'll meet on the eighth, June eighth, yeah.
June eighth is still on, on track.
Still on track for the twenty-second of June as well.
Yeah, we're only taking off the first meeting in July and the first meeting in August.
Oh, yes, all right.
Okay. Is that okay?
You would reorganize after the election.
Yep, do we need to, do we need to vote on that, Bill, to change those two meetings, or is it just...
I think, sure, I think we should.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we eliminate from our upcoming calendar the thirteenth of July and the, the tenth of August, was that right?
Yeah.
Tenth of August, yes.
I'll make a motion and second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, so getting up to the vouchers, Bill, do we have any vouchers this week that we needed to vote on so that you could, you could sign them? Or do you need us to sign them 'cause you're not here?
Uh, I was, uh, definitive, too, I'd asked you to, to look at a couple of invoices to see whether they still needed to be approved. Were we able to look at those?
The, the vendors never called me back today.
Okay, so we're all set for right now, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question for the town planner.
Sure.
We were just talking about the, uh, the rezoning, uh, articles. I, I don't recall, what happened to that, uh, rezoning of Fish Road that we were talking about?
The, um, there were two town hall lots that were included in that rezoning. And the assistant asked us to postpone that, with that zoning amendment, and so they had to look at what would be the, the best way to go forward on those two lots.
Okay.
So we'd probably go ahead in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the only other thing on the list here is other town notices and other correspondence?
No.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion where you adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Bill, enjoy your vacation.
Yep. You, too, bye-bye.